I'd like to call this meeting to order. Notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Oklahoma Public Meetings Act and the annual notice of meetings. A copy was posted on the township website and notice of this meeting was sent to the Sentinel and a copy was posted at the Franklin Township Municipal Building. I'd like to ask everyone to stand at this time, please.
Before I do that, I'll explain my end here tonight. The attorney who was on the intended to be appointed tonight, Mr. Longo, I found out about three something this afternoon. He contacted me and indicated that because he had been appointed as municipal court judge for Winslow Township, he was advised by the Superior Court system that he could not serve as a solicitor of the plan. So, until around 3:00 this afternoon, so I was available, so in order not to have these nice people have their applications coming in tonight, but Township's gonna have to move quickly to get somebody new for next month, so we'll proceed as normal tonight. And when it comes to solicitor appointment, Joe, you can just appoint me as like a holdover until the next person, you know, to end the month or whatever. Okay, so we have Ralph and Frank and Steve, I think, are the three people we're swearing in. If you all stand and raise your right hand. Do you have your booth with you? Three? Okay. All right. I state your name.
Ralph Calamine.
Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. Are you gonna read it? Okay. Well, I usually do it and you read after. Let's do that one, like they do with the Supreme Board. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
Perform all the duties as a member of the township or Franklin Planning Board
Perform all the duties as a member of the township or planning board
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
And to the governments established in the United States
And to the governments established in the United States
And in this state, under the authority of the people, so, under God.
And in this state, under the authority of the people, so, under God.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I'd like to do a roll call this time. Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Kaboo?
Here.
Mr. Constantine? Mr. Doyle? Mr. Ranson?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Bruno? Mr. Travaglione?
Here.
Mr. Pash?
Here.
Okay. At this time, I would like to open nomination for chairman.
(Inaudible)
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. As Michael indicated, it was two applicants that responded to the RFP. One individual came highly recommended and the second individual there was problems with some paperwork. So, leaving no one left in the pool, Michael has volunteered to step up and fill in for the applicants this evening. And at this time, I think we ought to have a motion in the second to appoint Michael temporary solicitor from January 1, 2024. And Mike, what do you think about February 20th, which gave the next meeting, which allows you the opportunity to fill out the resolutions and stuff from tonight's meeting? So, I think the Township's gonna put out a new RFP for solicitor for the board and someone would wanna make a motion from January 1 through February 20th.
I'll second that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. That works. Okay. All in favor except for one, I got one extension. Okay. This time, I'll entertain a motion for vice chair. I have a motion for Ralph. Is there a second?
A second.
Move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we'll move on to board secretary. Christine is the current secretary. Is there a motion to reappoint her for 2024?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is appointment of the engineering and planning from currently at CME. Is there a motion?
Motion for CME for engineering engineer.
Move in second?
Second.
Move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So noted.
Was it Malady in this meeting?
Next is a motion to approve the calendar submitted for 2024, the same, Thursday at the same time. Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last one is the motion to approve the official newspaper, which is the Gloucester County Times and the Senate.
I'll make that motion.
Move in second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay. Joe, I just wanted to clarify some in the registry. I did not put in a proposal for a board in this year, so what you appointed was just for me to have to hold over so the board can conduct business without interrupting. Correct. Yep.
Mr. Chair, the paper is South Jersey.
South Jersey. I'm used to, it used to be 10 cents. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is Resolution PB 2313 for real concrete. That's why you're here, Ralph. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve PB 2313 Resolution for real concrete.
Move in second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kaboo?
Yes.
Mr. Ranson?
Upstate.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Travaglione?
Yes.
And Chairman Pash?
Yes. A bit of housekeeping. Let's, we have Mr. Ranson for Mayor Bruno and Mr. Clark for Mr. Doyle. Stephen tonight. What I think, Joe, we should. I'm swearing Chris for the year. Comes next time we can do that. Okay. All right. So, for the year, so that's near the end of the year throughout this calendar year. So, we got it.
Yes, I do.
All right. Did I miss anything? I'm gonna rework here. Good? Okay. Tonight, the first application is PB 2314 Douglas Sparks.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Ryan Hoffman, Hoffman and Museum, on behalf of the applicant Douglas Sparks and Jessica Slocum. I have Mr. Sparks here with me tonight. If you want to swear him in, he's gonna provide some testimony for us.
Swear a testimony about the, give it the truth, not but the truth, so we got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, we are here for, Mr. Sparks is opening a, or hoping to open, a tattoo studio in Community Commons located at 2205 Delsey Drive. This would be a 1,400 square foot unit. It's an existing unit. There's no new construction planned here for the building or the site at all. There would be no changes whatsoever with the site or the building. And again, this is in the Highway Commercial Zoning District. I do wish to utilize the Planning Board, Engineer, and Planners joint letter to go Per the, the letter, that the existing building meets all the minimum bulk requirements of the Highway Commercial Zoning District, and thus there would be no new variances or variances for any existing or non-conforming conditions. I do wanna ask you, sir, in regards to the site itself, can you tell us in regards to the tattoo studio, just in general, what is that kind of use that you're gonna be utilizing?
Typically, I'm appointment only, so it's, that's pretty much what it would be. It'd be myself and my one client, you know, each day. Just tattoo, typically do like one tattoo a day.
Okay. So, yes.
Ryan? Ask the
Oh, yes. That's on me. So, how many employees would you have?
To start, it would just be me. Potentially, within a year, maybe two.
Gotcha. Okay. And so, it's appointment only, so really, it's one-on-one when you're there. If you had another artist, there would be maybe two and two.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any administrative staff that would be there with you, someone taking the money or anything like that?
No, it's typically handled by the artist.
Okay. And so, in regards to parking spots, at first, really, all you would need is something like two. Could grow to four. Do you think it's, from a timeline standpoint, we're not looking at three, four artists even for a few years, probably?
No. No. I'd say at max, within a year, maybe me, myself, and one other person.
Gotcha. Okay. And what would your typical hours be?
Typical hours would be 10 to 6, 10 to 7.
Are you open every day?
No.
What days will you be open?
I'm open for what would be Tuesday through Saturday.
Okay. And it's appointment only?
Appointment only.
Okay. So, would there be times, if you didn't have an appointment, that you're not there, shop is closed, or how does it work, you think?
I would be there.
Okay.
When the hours are what they are, you tend to have to show up.
Gotcha. And how long have you been a tattoo artist?
I've been a tattoo artist for 16 years. This summer will be 17.
Have you ever owned your own studio?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Do you have a healthy client base? Guys, girls that come to you if they need something, you know, things like that? It's word of mouth, I'm assuming?
Yeah. Typically, right now, I'm booked probably about five months out.
Okay. Great. Now, in regards to the signage, would there have to be any construction of a new sign or is there already a spot where a sign can be placed?
A sign would end up just being the window front. It's just probably like a decal in the window. That's all it would be.
There's, there's not like, like a light box that you
I'm not positive.
But you have no plans to construct anything?
No.
Okay. All right. All right. And then let me just look through my notes a little more. And do you think this would be a positive upgrade to the community, be able to utilize this space? Always good to have more business, but do you have a lot of customers here in the Franklinville area?
I have some. I mean, a lot of my clients are all over the place.
All over?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you're bringing in new business from other towns and things like that? Okay. And is there any detriment you think that this would bring to the town?
None that I could see.
Okay. All right. All right. I closed my case. If I would move to the engineer and our solicitor with any questions that they would have for our applicant.
No, I don't think, this is on the side where it's pretty much around the sides of the liquor stores, there's a lot of space over there for parking right now.
Yeah. I don't really have any questions, just to go from our board. This is a permitted use for the district. In case anybody were wondering, the only reason they are here is because they don't technically qualify for a waiver of site plan, even though they're changing use and not changing anything. Technically speaking, they're required, this is a minor site plan. What we recommended in our letter is sort of a workaround to almost grant them a waiver of site plan, where it's actually saying they can be deemed complete, waiving all of the actual site plan submission requirements, since we understand they're doing absolutely nothing to the exterior of the building. I assume there's some interior renovations to the tattoo studio. The only potential issue would be parking. I don't think I was really knowing that shopping center. I can't imagine that there's ever been less than four or five parking spaces available at any given time, so that really seems like a non-issue to me. I also would wanna point out that there is a shopping center sign on the front, it's on Delsey Drive, and they should have individual tenant spaces. Assuming you're working out with your landlord as part of your lease, you would be entitled to put a sign for your studio on that larger sign, as well as there should be some band above the top of the store, probably with a little bit of space for a sign. Usually, yeah. Right. But otherwise, there's really not much to say here. It's a permitted use in the zone, and they're moving into an existing vacant tenant space in a shopping center.
Okay. Michael, as far as notifications go for the record?
We're good.
You're right. Public. One of the stores here next to the liquor store says Tech Communications. Is this at home?
It's possible.
Does that make a difference or should be? I don't, I mean, if this guy's gonna
Sure.
We'll see the gym, we'll see the table, we'll see
My assumption is that they did not have a surveyor engineer prepare a new site plan for them. This is just a scan of probably the last time that shopping center was before this board.
If I'm not mistaken, this suite right next to where they made the cookies?
Uh, yes.
We approved that last year. This is right next to The engineer came. It's the same, most feature, same nail line up. There's a couple
Yeah. I believe tenants have changed Right now, it's between, I guess, the bakery and then the jujitsu place that just happened.
All right. This time, I'll entertain a motion open to public.
So Second.
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're open to the public vote on this application. Is there any public comment?
Second.
Move in, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Michael, who there?
I also have the
Yeah. There's a copy of it. Copy of the package. All right. I have a motion to approve the site plan waiver.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I got a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kaboo?
Yes.
Mr. Ranson?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Travaglione?
Yes.
Chairman Pash?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thanks, gentlemen.
First, one of the things we do, in my, in my business world, one of the things we do is prevent that from happening is we call them tenant spaces. In the mall, a tenant will move from one end of the mall to the other end of the mall and trying to label the fire alarm for those individual tenants. Most of the larger facilities just go and use space numbers versus preventing exactly what happened here. It has no bearing on the application, but it's confusing when the tenant moved from one, isn't no longer there, or moved to the other end of the mall rather than the college.
Probably frequently in shopping center tents, who switch spots or might move in, move out without notifying the township then.
And now, and now they're going to the wrong end of the building. Okay. Let's move on to PB 2316 for Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. David Patterson of the firm Marissa Patterson, representing the applicant, Paul Cuccinella Jr. With me this evening is Paul and also our licensed land surveyor, Michael Zimmerman. If we could have them sworn in, please.
As we're in testimony, you're about to do what we do, nothing but the truth, so we got it.
Yes. If we could recognize Mr. Zimmerman as a licensed professional land surveyor in the state of New Jersey for any testimony that may be necessary?
Would you like to present a short brief of your credentials, please, sir?
How long you been a licensed professional surveyor in New Jersey?
Sure, this'll be my 20th year.
20th year?
Good. Would you have any questions?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. This is for a minor subdivision for Lot 5, 701, Lot 50 and 50Q farm. To the housekeeping items, I have a letter from the Gloucester County Planning Board. They state the subdivision does not impact any county road, bridge, or drainage facility, so they have no interest in the application. I'll provide that to your attorney. Also, of record, we contacted your tax assessor to confirm the lot, lot and block numbers for the subdivision, and he has agreed that it'll be Lot 50 for the large lot and Lot 50.01 for the smaller 1.5 acre lot where the farmhouse is located. I would also ask if we could mark the deed to the property, which identifies Mr. Cuccinello as the owner of the property.
We can mark that A1.
And if we could also have the minor subdivision plan marked for any testimony that may be necessary from then.
We got A2.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any comments you'd like to make in regard to your minor subdivision plan, other than what it is?
Minor subdivision plan, plan on taking acre and a half as per the township requirements and just to make minor subdivision, taking an acre and a half around the existing house and cutting off the farm field for Paul's use.
I mean, the minor subdivision plan pretty much speaks for itself as to what is there. You have the larger seven, 37 plus acres for the property which is being farmed right now, and then you have the 1.5 plus or minus acres for the house and the barn. The house is vacant right now. I'm gonna ask Mr. Cuccinello if he can answer a few questions. Number one, you're the owner of the property, as we've already provided to your solicitor, to the solicitor for the board. With regards to the 1.5 acre piece of property where the house and the barn is located, what is the proposed use of that property?
So, actually, I'm selling that to my manager of the paintball park. He currently lives an hour away. His youngest kid just graduated college. They wanna downsize, so instead of getting a house in Burlington where he lives, he's gonna fix up that house and live there. He'll now be, you know, walk away from work, so it kinda works out for him. The rest of the farm is gonna stay being farmed by the Trangalos. I just bought his buffer. I'm not doing anything with it. I just wanna leave it the way it is. So, really, it's just a way of helping my manager live closer to work, which helps me.
But the remainder of the property will still be cultivated?
Will still be, yeah. Same farmer, same thing. Nothing changes. Yep.
All right. And you have no other use for the property at this point?
I do not. No, just buffer for me. Yeah.
All right. With respect to, on the subdivision plan, you noticed that there's an easement to the rear of the property. What's the purpose of that?
I just need access. So, that gives me access to the back of my property. Not planning on doing any of it yet. I just wanna have it for later, so I can not have to, you know, come back if I need to do something. But mostly, just to get, like, I mean, I have a contracting business myself, so I wanna get trucks or trailers back there. It gives me access to it.
And it gives you access to the paintball facility?
Well, yeah, if I really get the back of the property. I have no access there now, so.
Right. With respect to the 1.5 acres, in regards to the engineer's report, I'd like to address that right now, if we could. First, I'm gonna ask Mr. Zimmerman, when the report, there are identified four things that need to be completed on the subdivision plan to be acceptable. Do you agree to make those changes?
Yeah, they can be made once, once it's been approved.
Okay. That relates to further identification of the 200-foot property owner list, meets and bounds description of the properties, location of any streams or watercourses, and identification of any adjacent lands that have been assessed as farmland. And we agree to make those changes, correct?
Yeah, make an update on the survey.
Now, there is one question on the engineer's report, and that is the farmland buffer. With respect to the 1.5 acres where the house and the barn are located, we meet the 50-foot requirement, if I'm not mistaken. However, we don't meet the 100-foot requirement. The barn is within 80, is only 80 feet, and you need a 100-foot buffer. We would request if the board would grant us a waiver for that this evening, so that it can stay the same way it is. It's not harming anything. It's an existing use where the barn is. We're just creating that 1.5 acre piece of property for, as he has indicated for his manager, and we'd like to keep it at the 1.5 acres, so the remainder can continue to be farmed as it should. So, we would request a waiver for that. I would ask your engineer if he has any issues with that.
I don't. 100-foot buffers required between residences and farm properties, considering this is both within the same subdivision and under common ownership. The assumption would be that your manager moving in also would be aware that there is a farm
Yeah, absolutely.
In the backyard. That would not be complaining to the town about farm activities happening only 80 feet from his backyard shed rather than 100 feet. So, it all being the same property, I don't really have to take any issue with it.
As a member of the agriculture advisory committee, we reviewed this application earlier this month, and typically, the ag farmers are enforced to the fullest extent of the law on a major subdivision, seeing now this is a minor subdivision, it's less, and as our planner has stated, the same farmer is farming, as he's done for many years. I'm gonna make another comment about this property. I don't think the owner knows this. He purchased it from the widow of our former planning board chairman, Mr. E. Lloyd Neon. He was here for our planning board all through the
Did not know that.
Seventies. And he's
Yeah, he was due a power of attorney. She was
She's in Spain.
She's in Spain. Right. So, she wasn't coming back.
You don't wanna come back to work?
No.
That's okay.
But we have no other testimony before the board.
Chris? I do have just one question about the easement. You had mentioned it's just to access the property in the back where your paintball facility is. Do you have any plans on putting in a driveway there eventually?
I mean, not as of right now, but like, I was scared to not do it, 'cause I would have no way, if I sell that property, I have no way to access the farm at all.
Just to maintain it
Just to maintain, yeah. So, like
Maybe someday in the future
Exactly.
Okay. So, for now, it's totally fine. There's a possibility of, depending on how the driveways configured, they might need to come back before the board, but unlikely. They don't need, I don't think there's any setback requirements there for driveway. There would be some clearing of vegetation order to put in the driveway, but with no construction proposed, this is actually a non-issue. They're just something looking at that, kind of wondering why you need access to the woods behind the paintball facility.
behind the paintball facility?
Well, the farm field's back there, so to farm it, that's the only, that'd be the only access, yeah.
That just kind of stood out to me as a scratch on my head a little bit when I first saw the subdivision plan, but if they want access, they want access, that's fine, and they can, that can be part of the subdivision, with no, no violation of any law if it's that way. That's the only question we have.
Michael, there's no notice, sorry. They did give notice because of the, yeah, our hair color bumper. Okay. All right, and I'll entertain, this time, and the note, then all for record, all the notices were appropriate?
Yes.
You're satisfied with that? This time, I'll entertain a motion to open to the public. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
For the public portion on this application, if there are any questions to come forward. Hearing none, saying none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close, open public portion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant or engineers? Is there a motion?
I have a motion to approve PB 2316, waiver for the agriculture buffer, and the minor items that are going to be taken from the engineer.
Move in second, all in, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Kaboo?
Yes.
Mr. Ranson?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Swede?
Yes.
Mr. Travaleon?
Yes.
Chairman Petch?
Yes. Right, please.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Christine, do we have any correspondence this evening?
No.
Time, entertain a men, a motion to approve the minutes of December 19.
Motion to approve the minutes of December 19.
Move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Michael, do we need for, somebody for process? No. Comments from the board? Here is a directory that the, Chris had provided here. If you would please review the directory with the email addresses, phone numbers, and addresses, so that we have a, so she has an accurate list. I understand there was a couple corrections. What will happen is that she'll forward this directory out after, again, after the corrections are used. There are some mistakes on here, so don't feel, don't use the copy that was submitted tonight. Just let her know if it's good, with your information is correct. As far as the master plan review, the subcommittee, the CME has, Chris, you want to touch on the four, are you prepared to, just to touch on, I like the four elements that CME...
So, what I forwarded to you, relative to this, it was the master plan reexamination report will ultimately be one document. I broke it down into four initial sections for a quick review, and that is essentially the background information, which the purpose of the master plan reexamination report, like the name implies, you're reexamining the existing master plan, so it's not a brand-new master plan, starting from scratch with it down. There are certain components that the law requires be in every reexamination report, one being a review of all the goals, objectives, critical policy statements from previous master planning documents, and see whether or not there's still balance, literally just listing out of all your previous goals from the last master plan. Kind of lengthy, things about 15 pages worth of goals and objectives from your last master plan. Noting what's changed since the time of the last master plan, for 2013, when yours was last adopted, so everything in terms of updating demographic, economic information of the township based on census data, which frankly, there hasn't been a whole lot of changes there. Listing out all the changes in state laws that impact planning and land use in New Jersey, so there's summary of all those changes. What else did I say? Goals.
The third one was the prior goals, it's a list of previous goals and objectives from the master plan, and a summary of what was done to improve, implement these goals.
What's been done, yeah, so changes statewide in terms of new legislation that have been about, things like requiring electric vehicles, stuff like that. And then, another part belonging to goals, and what has actually been done in the last 11 years now in the township, where the town has tried to address things that are identified as issues in the last master plan. And so, essentially, what we've done so far is we've put together the background information that'll form what we'll discuss with the subcommittee of, you know, where we want to go looking forward into the future. Do we think the previous master plan is still a valid document? Do we think this is getting old and dated and it's junk now, and we need to start over? That's the whole, that's really the task of the subcommittee, as well as myself, is to look at the master plan, have some discussions on how we feel about it, and one by one, take every, every goal, objective, policy statement, assumption, parse through it, and say, is this still valid? Do we need to change this, and make recommendations for any other changes going forward? It's, it's kind of a, like I said, not a brand-new master plan, we're not starting from scratch, it's not a full vision of, you know, how we want Franklin to be 50 years from now, it's to review the previous master plan, but at the same time, almost anything is still kind of on the table, we're looking for recommendations for changes to the master plan. So it's, it's setting the framework for, for any minor changes to your, your waiting orders. And reviewing all, all the previous goals and objectives from the previous master plan to make a determination whether or not, you know, a state of course, or, or change direction a little bit.
Thanks, Chris, thanks for... Sorry, sorry about blindsiding you there, I actually could have read, I had the talk a little there. Okay, with that said, the, I had emailed Barbara earlier for one, and she's on vacation this week, I'm trying to, Tuesday nights are pretty well tied up, the bill, this building is pretty well tied up on Tuesday nights between planning, zoning, and township permitting. Thursdays is worse, so I'm looking at trying to get a Wednesday night availability of the building on Wednesday night. The thought here is, this is a subcommittee, so with that said, I think what I'd like to try to do is take public input at the first subcommittee meeting, that the, that the subcommittee organized, take a public comment, and then we can, after we're at that in the evening, we can work on the lots and bolts of this, and then present it to the full planning board for a public comment at the end as well. So there will be a piece, a time for public comment in the very beginning. We're looking at Wednesday, Wednesday nights, and, you know, with that said, I just want to confirm with Barbara, it's okay to use the building, but it's not tied up to something else. I realize that, Chris, you, you know, there's certain Wednesdays that you have problems with, and all of them where you're available, so we'll work around professional schedules as well.
By schedule in general, just to work where, first Wednesday of the month, I'm already double booked for the entire year.
Right.
So I've already got, which meeting I'm going to, who's covering, who's going to be. Second and fourth Wednesdays, I technically have, I'm seeking, I'm the planning board planner there, but they only meet about once every couple of weeks, on my calendar as they have their meetings, so there's only a 20, 25% chance that I should actually have to go to one of those meetings, and more than likely, if needed, I think I have something to cover for the month, on a meeting, I think, here. So the first Wednesday of the month is definitely, I'm already done.